Hello, everyone. Welcome to the July sixteenth, twenty twenty four, meeting of the planning board. We are in person here at one forty-one Kyd Road, and I will just remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. So we don't want to foul of any wiretap laws. First thing on the agenda tonight was scheduled for seven P M. It's the site plan review public hearing for Bank of America to increase the number of exterior light fixtures. By more than ten percent at fifty-two Main Street parcel. Number one, six, nine, nine. The applicant has requested a continuance without discussion. So I don't know when that will be pushed to.
Uh, August sixth.
August sixth at seven P M, right? I'll confirm that with the person who manages the schedule. Is that required a motion?
Yeah, actually, yes.
Okay, so I would ask for a motion to move that to the August sixth meeting at seven P M.
I'll move that second.
Awesome. And then all those a favor? Anyone opposed? Nope. Great. That's unanimous. No roll call. With time certain items pending later in the evening, we will jump it forward to administrative business. Which I guess we will start with Planning Board Liaison and Town Planner updates.
I'll give uh one update. I think I sent to the board. We did get our. Pre-adoption review letter from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities after town meeting. Even though we filed February sixteenth. Well, after ninety days. So they have flagged a couple of items for the compliance model where our G I S team. Is meeting with the original consultant that assisted us. And then we will go back and meet with H L C to talk about the G I S aspects of the compliance model. And then at that point, once we figure out. There's some difference of opinion on certain way things that are being interpreted, but. After that happens, then I will bring it back to the board for discussion. At this point, I'm, I just don't have enough information of their letter was was very vague. So once we understand what it is that they think is wrong. It may require an amendment to the bylaw at town meeting. Just don't know at this point. Then the question comes down to weighing the different options. At this point, I'm not sure if the. There's currently certain bills in the legislature that are one is looking to. Roll back the date for compliance for the M B T A communities. It's in one version, didn't make it in another version. It's still being discussed in that version, so. So it unfortunately, it's it's. Whether we will have to have a fall town meeting, which is what we're trying not to do. It's. It's significantly expensive to the tune of about seventy-five thousand dollars. To hold one special town meeting, so. So, once I know more, it will come back to the boards with the full explanation. And we'll move forward from there. That's what I can give you an update on that. The M B T A communities' site plan rules and regs. Finalizing, you know, uh, well, attempting to finalize a draft document with the consultant. So that she can come back to the board in August. It it really is hurting cats with the number of staff people. If you think about all the comment letters that you get when you're reviewing a site plan, it's trying to get all of those staff people to. To provide comments. So we're 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 inching along. So that's, that's an update for that one. The survey has closed for the historic preservation plan and so and. Clifford, the senior planner who supports the historical commission, is now will go into the next phase with the consultant. On putting together the historic resources, you know, historic master plan. This is what it's being called. So that's now entering the, you know, the next phase of development. We did a pretty hard push with the survey, and I think she got close to three hundred responses. So we're really and really happy with that. The transportation plan that we're working with. Engineering is the project manager for that, and we had a consultant. Currently discussing an amendment to that scope, so that that can move forward over the summer. And the fall. And then. As Linda knows, everything else is all M C I conquered. And at 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 this point. I don't know, Linda, if you want to give an update.
The last meeting was a meeting between the. Conquered and the advisor board and D C A M, which is the group of the state that is responsible for.
Division of Capital Assets Management and Maintenance.
Right, so they work with all the the physical land of the state and became in charge of. In charge of. The prison once it was determined that it was no longer going to be a prison. And so they were nice enough to come in and give a presentation, and I think you all. Got a copy of that. I think it's also on the website for anyone who has an interest. Just giving a general rundown of the existing. Condition and physical plant and then sort of. The next steps forward. So it's, that was like the second form of stuff. Still pretty early days. I don't think there is anything noteworthy. Other than it was really very interesting.
So Linda, I had a quick question about that. I saw up, like, I think I'm right on these dates. In the presentation that they anticipated re-rezoning in the parcel at the town level from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. That's when they anticipated? That that's what it's, that's when they scope it out, it was like, we anticipate.
Say the one thing that. They was a lot of arm waving and they did not only admitted to that, but just sort of said, we we sort of threw this up.
Just threw dates out there because that seemed just wildly unrealistic to me, and I wanted to.
There are there are two issues, but and that's one reason why I think this is important to keep. The planning board.
Yeah.
Very well informed about M C I conquered because the. When the, what is it? When the rubber hits the road, it's going to be zoning.
Yeah.
And and it's going to come before us, and so it's important, I think, for people to keep up to date. On where things are going. There are two issues with regard to zoning, one near term and one longer term. Near term is the issue of that is zoned for industrial use. And then the question is. Now that it, when it passes to D C A M. They own it, they have rights to do things with it that can include the town. But don't have to include the town. What the town can do is rezone. There's a bit of concern right now that is zoned industrial. And there are many industrial uses, and people always bring up the issue of an Amazon.
Distribution.
Distribution center. To sort of get your attention. But nonetheless, the town would not probably want to see that as the highest valued use of that land. So there is a near term issues that need to be worked out. D C A M was very clear that. They had no intention to pursue something that was not in partnership. With a small P with the town. And I I think that that was probably one of the important things that came out at this last meeting was their sincerity. People felt that 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 was right, certainly at the outset, very clear. However, there is that potential risk, and it's something that. The town, the select board, it it, you know, pretty much has to. Way, do we need to do something near term in that regard? And that's something that's something that people should be aware of, but I don't know that any action will be taken. And then long term, obviously, they'll have to be a a master plan for the the entire property. And that will then lead to important zoning decisions.
So I, yeah, so I can, you know, from from my perspective as a planner, there there are certain state. Land, state assets where, you know. D C A M has, you know, we don't want, if if, you know, we're going to sell it and and that town. The it there, the type of asset that could be, you know, repurposed very quickly based on the current zoning. That is not the case with M C I conquered. It it's. There's one, it's it's not just D C A M. It's, you know, it, there's a lot of state entities that have significant. You know, stakeholders, you know, the Department of Corrections, Mass D O T. Police. So there's, there's a, there's a lot. So it's not, it's not a, it's not a asset that, you know, is. That they can just get rid of because, you know, there's so much conversation that needs to happen with all these other state entities. It's not an asset that can be repurposed. You know, basically at all. You know, I know that, you know, there's certain correctional facilities that lend itself to being, you know, a Norfolk, you know. You know, a shelter. That is, that is not the case, completely different types. Of assets. So I'm not, I'm not concerned about having to put an interim zoning in place. To, you know, protect, you know, the town. You know, it was done in some other communities. Because the the visioning process and, you know, the the planning process. Will take two years. And, you know, D C A M is going to be responsible for that initial, you know, visioning process, having a consultant to come in. Their, you know, partner with the town and do that visioning process of, you know, what? What is it that the community, you know? Wants to see there and how does, you know, how does that happen? And then the, you know, the town will take on. Once you, once you start the visioning process, then you get to, you know, that point of, you know, here's. The plan that they're going to come up with. Probably by the end of, when I say next year. And at, you know. Towards the end of that, then the town can start the zoning process. Which one of the items that D C A M brought forward and I I agree and. It's going to take a lot of education, but basically, you know, that's going to be, other than the historic building. That's going to be a completely blank slate, and it would be perfect for a form-based code. Which I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna try to educate you.
Yeah.
But you do a like a twenty-five words or less what a form-based code is.
So right now, we have a zoning bylaw that talks about you will be, you know, a minimum distance from this property line. You will have a minimum of this amount of parking. You will have, you know, a maximum of this height. Form-based code. Is is a a pretty intense community process that goes into. What are the elements of this, you know, of this? That you that you like, West Concord Village, you know, everybody likes that, you know, wide sidewalk, the buildings. You know, right at the edge of the sidewalk, parking's in the rear. They like the different elements of a building and. You know, different types of roof lines and, you know, not all glass on the first. And and so those are all elements, and those get put into a zoning that says, okay. You you can only be a maximum of five feet from the front property line, and that five feet, you know, needs to be, you know. Planting and the sidewalks have to be, you know. A a maximum of, you know, you know, or a sidewalk has to be a minimum of this and. Parking has to be located in the rear and so it develops zoning in 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 a what you want. And not, you know, what you don't want. So does that, does that make sense? You know, you're you're, you know, it talks about how the the height of the building has to, you know, be, you know, modulated and.
So form refers to what, what do you want the form of this space to be like?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's based on form rather than on trick numerical, very simple metrics.
Yeah, it's based on form and not just, you know, dimensions.
Okay. Form versus function.
No, I I would actually say the the function is all part of the form.
It's part of the form.
And it's not, you know, it's not just dimensional that. You know, you you have to have this setback and this, you know, maximum faith then, you know, so it's. But that will be when D C A M's getting towards the end of, you know, kind of like their process. Will be the beginning of the town doing its its zoning process. And I would see, you know, the zoning coming to town meeting twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, seems more.
Yeah. And and I and I think that's where, I think that's where D C A M's falling.
Okay.
As well.
Maybe if if you run across any. Form-based code. No, I know, that would be great.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of information out there and and I'll start.
None of us had been.
Yeah.
And involved in it.
Here's the other thing, I don't, you know, this won't, the zoning won't be a planning board-driven thing.
Right.
You know, it'll be the advisory board. You know, driving that and and everybody will, you know. Hopefully, everybody will, you know, be part of that conversation and that input. But I I and and they'll be, you know, it may be the same consultant that D C A M has doing. Or maybe, you know, a different consultant because it will be the town hiring that consultant for the zoning piece of it. The 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 first, I'm going to say kickoff will probably be, you know. A one-hour workshop with one hour of questions of just, this is what it is. This is what it can do. This is what it can't do, and this is. And and no conversation about M C I conquered at all, just. Because it's going to be, it's going to be new and and new is scary for most people.
But there there's, should be an introductory M C I conquered meeting. With D C A M for the community in September, I believe. Something to look forward to.
That's all I have.
Okay. I guess we'll finish out liaison reports. Does anyone else have any updates they would like to share with their group from their respective committees? I do not.
Although I can just note that the Transportation Advisory Committee is meeting later this week. And they have drafted a response to the. So more on that later.
Anybody else? I see a lot of shaking heads, just confirming, okay. And with that, we have a couple of minutes before our scheduled seven thirty preliminary discussion hearing, so. Could we throw in? Quick discussion of the potential three-week. Meeting schedule? Or or whatever, whatever suits you.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I guess the the impetus of this was that the planning board meets every two weeks, as you all know, and. That is simultaneously a lot for us. And puts stress on the town staff to try to accomplish what. The applicants are trying to do in the sense of getting feedback. So, obviously, if you're an applicant, you would love to get to the next meeting. And or the meeting after, and sometimes two weeks or a month isn't actually enough to get the feedback they need, whereas if we shifted to a. Three-week, six-week cycle. It would actually give town staff enough time to get feedback they need and. Be able to like process it. Chew on it a little bit before it comes right back in, so we don't end up with this constant cycle of. Getting feedback from town staff the day before the scheduled hearing. Having the applicant agree to have a two-week extension so that the planning department can actually read the documents they got from town staff, you know. This this endless cycle and it would also give us a chance to have a little bit of breathing room in the sense of, I know we now have a full complement, so it's hard to say that, but. In discussions I've had over the past couple of years trying to recruit people, as soon as you say twice a month, people are like, no, that's just too much. So three weeks can be twice a month, but it feels less.
Well, it is less.
It is less, yeah. It is noticeably less over time. And so what Elizabeth prepared obviously was a draft. Proposed schedule just just to to get it out there so we could have that discussion. Obviously, there are some some issues with dates. I noticed that. New Year's Eve was on there, which obviously is not going to happen, and there's probably some others in there that are.
Well, there's three conflicts with C P C meetings this year. But. Speaking of work for town staff, you worked so hard to make no conflicts.
So like, you know, this is, you know, this is for the board to discuss and and if it's something you. Want to consider, then Heather and I will go back through this and.
Shift things around and reduce.
Shift things around, yeah, because you're you're not meeting December thirty-first, that's for sure.
I don't know, there's no party like a planning board meeting.
It also, if it's a three-week schedule, that also might make it a little easier for us to. Avoid things like school vacation weeks and, you know, which. I know town meeting used to hit it anyway, so it just became, you ran out of time, but you know, things like that just gives you a little bit more flexibility. So.
Can we, can we take care of the constituents for that kind of cycle?
So. The only, so other than the select board. There there isn't any other order committee that meets every other week. The Natural Resources Commission used to. But they they have to, you know, open their public hearings by law in the first twenty-one days. But they shifted to a three-week schedule like three, four years ago. And. It it has definitely for staff and the flow of things been an improvement for them, so. You know, I. I I. It's never, it's never, it it's. I I don't, I couldn't tell you, you know, how it's going to work out. I know it works for many other boards and including the Natural Resources Commission, who's. Probably. Goes. Evaluates more applications every month. Then then the planning board, I don't, you know, I'm not necessarily going to say they're, you know, any busier than. This board. You guys do a lot, so I I. I I would like to think so.
We can still take care of the public, right? That was my question. That's, you know, I mean, okay.
Well, because I do think there's a, there's a benefit to not having. These continuances, where it's difficult for members of the public to keep track of when hearings. On something that they might be interested in are happening. If it's comes forward, then it's late, and then it's continued, and then it's this, and then. So I do think if we can streamline and make it clear kind of when. Certain agenda items are coming up and they're not being continued, even though the meetings are less frequent, that kind of. Lessening the confusion, I could see being. Can be a benefit to the public.
And we've been having a lot of continuances. I mean, a lot.
And some of that won't change just by the nature of what we do, but there'll be some that that I think would be eliminated by stretching to three, three weeks.
And hopefully, it'll be more continues is where we need it. Not necessarily what the applicant needs, like, because you you have those two things have to line up, and everybody has to be ready to go. So giving that that extra week may actually make a difference of making sure that the stars do align and that everything's in the right spot. So with that, I guess, we don't really need a motion or anything, do we? We can just, you'll you'll just go back with Heather and.
Yeah, I'll just go back with Heather and. Really look at dates, conflicts, and. And we'll work it out.
Awesome.
But at this point, you, your next meeting is three weeks away, so August sixth, so.
That went well.
I don't remember how that happened, but, okay.
Because we don't meet every two weeks, we meet twice a month, and so some months.
One month, there's an extra week.
So I guess with that, we are now at seven thirty, so we can move forward, aren't we? Yeah, we can move forward, we'll be preliminary.
For some reason, on, on the menu, I had that seven thirty was. It's Stansky and McNary, but then at seven-ten, it was middle sex. Is that? This mean?
I have.
You've got revise.
You've got revise. Yeah, it was Elizabeth sent it out a little earlier.
Sorry about that.
So now it's seven thirty, there's Stansky and McNary, seven forty-five for the other one.
Sorry, no, that's probably a a typo in my memo.
Oh, I didn't look at the memo. So I guess with that, we will move on to the preliminary subdivision public hearing, so in accordance with the provisions of M G L Chapter forty-one, section. Eighty-one dash T in the Town of Concord subdivision rules and regulations to review preliminary subdivision plan application of Stansky and McNary. For the improvement of a new roadway and for the creation of two new building lots at sixty-one B Walden Street parcel two. Or zero-two-seven-four-dash-two. All right, so we'll turn it over to Stansky McNary.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dan Carr from Stansky McNary, and I am going to share my screen if that is possible. All right, so this right here is the preliminary conventional subdivision for sixty-one B Walden Street. To give you an idea of where we are, we're towards the southern end of Walden Street, near the intersection with Route Two. It's.
Can I have you expand? Your screen to full screen?
Can you enlarge it at all?
It's big as.
Yeah, thank you.
No problem. Excuse me. So. I know that my colleague Rob had met with town staff about this, and they had some requests for additional information. And I believe we provided all that information. So what we want to do here, we want to. Subdivide the lot into two single-family home lots. We have done soil testing on site, and we found really nice sand with no signs of groundwater. So we have enough soil testing for two single-family home lots. It's kind of an interesting site with the topography. So Walden Street is a little bit lower, so there's. The beginning of the road is a little bit of a cut into it, but then it flattens out really well for the, a big portion of. The lot, like this whole front area here is nice and flat. And so we're hoping to squeeze in the houses in that flat area and maybe take advantage of the slope behind them. For walkout basements. So this plan here requires waivers from the subdivision regulations, and so I'm just going to go through those waivers that we're. We're requesting. The first one is, sorry, I just want to clear my screen. The first one is a waiver to the the right-of-way width. So subdivision regulations require fifty feet width for a right-of-way. We're proposing thirty feet. For just a portion of the of the. Um, we're proposing thirty feet for just a portion of the of the right of way. So this section here is fifty feet. So we don't need a waiver for that section of the right of way, but we do, we're proposing this as also a right of way here to get us frontage for lot B. And the reason why we're requesting this as thirty feet wide as opposed to fifty feet wide is because we wanna take advantage of all that flat area in the front of the lot, and you can see how the contours are so closely together here. It's actually kind of interesting, um, the topography here, I have a feeling that this site was historically mined for sand. Given the kind of unique topology here, so it's it slopes down to a low point about right here, and then it slopes back up here, so there's like, there's like a low point down here, so if a water, water would flow this way through the site. Um, so we're hoping to take advantage of the more of the flat area of the site and um, avoid having to move so much earth to build in the rear portion of the lot where it's sloped up and down so much, so the um, the thirty foot right of way here allows us to put the septic systems in the front yard um, to avoid having to build along a slope, which would be difficult. And um, so in the front yard for lot A and the side yard for lot B, we can put the septic systems in there because the right of way is not as wide, and we have now separation distances required for um, property line setbacks to septic system, so that's one of the reasons why we're hoping to get this waiver for the right of way width. And plus, you know, the this road is only servicing two single family homes. So um, that kind of dra- is driving a lot of our waiver requests, so the first one we're requesting is the right of way width, like I discussed. The second one is um, a a waiver request to reduce the width of pavement. Subdivision regulations require um, twenty two feet of pavement, we're proposing eighteen feet. Um, but we are proposing a total travel width of twenty two feet, so we'll have eighteen foot of pavement and two foot shoulders on their side, so we'll have twenty two feet of travel width, but only eighteen feet would be paved. Um, cuz again, it's only serving two single family dwellings, so it's, you know, we, other towns have common driveway regs, and so we're thinking more in that terms for roadway width. Um, the third waiver we are requesting is uh, the waiver to the cul-de-sac requirements, um, so we're proposing instead a T turnaround, which we have confirmed works with the fire truck turning apparatus for Concord. So um, typical subdivision requirements um, require a cul-de-sac. And I know that during the staff meeting that my colleague had with with the town, um they wanted to see more information on what a uh what a conventional cul-de-sac would look like, so I'm showing that plan here. And so you can see that, you know, just based on the geometry of the lot, um, it forced, it would force the cul-de-sac to go in the middle of that steeply sloped area. And so you can see that there's, there would be a lot of earth movement involved with a cul-de-sac like this. And it's a lot more pavement, and again, it's only servicing two homes, so we think it would be excessive for a development like this. And we also provided a um, a profile of what a kind of, what road, what this cul-de-sac road would look like. And so this dash line here represents the existing grade. In the dark line there represents what the proposed grade looked like. So you could see in the beginning, we would have to cut a bunch of soil, and then around the cul-de-sac, we would have to fill in a bunch of soil, so it'd be just a lot of earth movement when we don't believe it's necessary, and a uh, and the this plan here with the, just the T turnaround is adequate for these types of uh, single family homes, you know. Um, so that's the third waiver we are hoping to request, and the fourth waiver is um, to the sidewalk requirements. For similar reasons, you know, it's only two single family homes. We didn't think that uh, it wouldn't be like a high traffic kind of road at all, so we're hoping to waive the requirements for a sidewalk along one side of the road. Um, as I mentioned earlier, there's good soil on site, no signs of groundwater, so we're we haven't done a full design yet cuz we're only in preliminary. But we were thinking we would do some sort of um, subsurface infiltration for stormwater at the beginning of the road to capture, you know, the beginning portion of the road, we'll have all that infiltrated underground. And then for the rest of the site, we're thinking, you know, some stormwater at the end of the private driveway here, maybe some over here if we needed at the bottom of this hill. Um, and then roof drywells for the 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 roofs. Be able to get that all underground and infiltrated, and the soil is more than capable of handling this infiltration. So, yeah, I think that basically describes what we're hoping to do here, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
If no one objects. I can lead off if no one objects, so the proposed dwellings, you talk about a walkout basement, so you you say that this plan itself would would prevent some of a cut and fill and all of that. How steep would the incline be in the walkout basement? Where you're hitting what looks to be, it drops about one foot every three feet, so it sounds like it's a cliff. I'm just curious, the because you have the dwelling outlined, but not like any yard or any anything like that, so I'm just curious what the the amount of fill you're talking about would be, in order to actually make those walk out of bowl.
Sure, so um, we typically would put something like, you know, maybe a a four foot retaining wall. Maybe twenty feet off the back of the dwelling, just to give them some flat area in the back, something like this. And so we would fill in there, but I think the fill that we would you know, use to fill in that backyard would come from the fill that's needed to cut away for the foundation in the front of the house. So it'd be kind of, you know, putting the fill from the foundation over there and kind of you know, we'd keep all retaining walls less than four feet. And and again, we're we're only in the preliminary design stages, but um, that is what we think would be, you know, makes them, make the most sense with this site. So we haven't graded it out fully yet, but that is our idea.
That's my preliminary question, so I'll open it up to whoever has more.
I have a few questions, so first, a small matter. I see you haven't marked the two foot shoulders on this plan, now as you noted, it's a preliminary plan. But you are getting awfully close to the corner with um, of the lot by the uh, T turnaround. So it will be helpful to make sure that it will actually you'll actually be able to fit your two foot shoulders there at the inside curve of the T turnaround. Second of all, um well, I have two other questions, but they kind of go together. Where the common driveway meets Walden Street, you're showing some retaining walls. Am I seeing correctly that they go into the right of way for Walden Street?
That is correct.
So I would suggest that it would be, uh, there are no sidewalks on Walden Street, and hopefully someday there will be a sidewalk somewhere on one or both sides of Walden Street. And it, we ought to preserve the uh, possibility of putting them in and not have uh, retaining walls in the way, and perhaps engineering has something to say about that, but it is something I notice.
So um, it's been, it gets um, a comment letter from engineering um, late on Monday and was not able was out of the office for most of the day, so um, you know, I, it hasn't gone to the board, it hasn't gone to the applicant. Um, I, um, so I can't, I can't speak to that, and that's definitely a question that I would raise um, to whether that's even um, permitted, it may not even be permitted.
And then, second of all, going along with that is uh, there are two adjacent lots, one to the um, north and one to the south, each with their own driveway. Elizabeth will probably tell me that this isn't legal, but if one or both of those could, they're both really quite close to the proposed driveway. If one or both of those could be made a common or shared driveway with this one, it would keep the number of curb cuts the same or even reduce it. And um, uh, particularly, I believe its house number is six one eight, has its driveway closer to and I think that's the one which is currently encroaching on the corner of the property there. In order to merge it in, it would probably be necessary uh, to have some jiggery pokery to move your um uh, you've got this funny almost triangular shape, which I think is a stormwater storage or something. You might have to shift it around there, and it would obviously require the agreement of the homeowner, but I think that one or both of those driveways would be a very interesting possibility for merging in to improve the uh, situation of cars going in and out.
Yeah, that's an interesting thought, we we can look into that for sure.
It's my only question, and Daniel, if you can um, correct me, the front stormwater um, area, you're saying you're looking at that to be subsurface?
Yeah, that's how I thought.
Um, why not um, standard?
Infiltration basin, something like that, yeah, um, mostly aesthetics, you know. It would be nice to have a landscaped area instead of, you know, a hole in the ground, but you know, there's, there's nothing saying we couldn't put in a basin there, we just thought it would be more appreciated by the neighbors.
Um, I, I, so I would, um, I would encourage you to have that conversation with the butters, cuz uh, uh, one, subsurface is 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 a, a much different maintenance issue, and for two property owners to assume that maintenance, that's um, that that is a cost burden of some measure. Um, subsurface, the landscaping that you would be um, looking to do there would be definitely limited. Uh, and what you could put there, um, and I think there's a lot of um really great examples of standard infiltration basins that are um, landscaped very attractively and from a you know, habitat uh, perspective, um, is, has a much greater value, so um, I would probably, you know, encourage you to evaluate that. Um, what I do, uh, want, cuz I believe this is probably the first preliminary plan for for you?
Right.
Or all of you?
I think I don't remember.
Okay, um, so um, a preliminary plan uh, does not constitute an approved subdivision. Um, it is um, a a conceptual plan that allows the board to provide an applicant input on um, the plan. Make observations and requests for what type of additional information the board would like to see as part of a definitive plan submission. Um, it also gives an opportunity for the board to have a conversation with an applicant about um, waivers that uh, they are seeking to request. Um, the board can provide, um, you know indication on which waivers they um would be in support of, um, or uh you know, already, you know, asked for for a definitive plan, one item would be, you know, uh, details on the pavement and shoulder width to make sure the improvements can be accommodated completely within the the property. Um, to to that point, I would also um, imagine that uh, with that would be the ability to pour snow. And you know, somebody's gonna plow the, plow the driveway. Uh, so that would be additional information required for the um, definitive plan submission. But um, if the board does move forward and um, grant a preliminary plan, uh, it does not constitute a subdivision, it does not um, create the road layout, and it does not create the lots, uh, that can only be done through a definitive plan process. Um, for the definitive plan, the board would um, receive um, significant more detail. Um, it would be, you know, stormwater drainage reports, there would be um, much more details far as the grading. Um, the layout of the utilities, uh, and and all of that uh, information.
Thank you.
Um, so if we're giving kind of general impressions, um, so I think, I think my my overall impression is that the waivers you're requesting is because you are fighting just the natural topography of this particular parcel. You know, square footage wise, you're fine, you know, you have enough space, but then because of the topography, you have to shift things forward, you have to narrow the roadways. I don't have an objection to uh, eliminating a sidewalk requirement when you have two single family dwellings because just based on foot and a dead end, because based on foot traffic, it's probably not a safety concern. But all the rest of them are because you need to move these dwellings forward to avoid having to fill what, based on on the plothead seem to be a a deep ravine. And given that, it seems that you're, you're, you're fighting nature pretty significantly. Um, and I question whether that's really worth the end result for two single family dwellings in this particular location. Um, so that's not a commitment one way or another, but I think you're, you're struggling with the number of waivers you're requesting just based on the fact of that this particular parcel um, doesn't really lend itself um, easily to more than one single family dwelling.
So, the, the the only other um, bit of information I will add, and um, I can provide um, additional information after this meeting to the board. Um, as far as the under subdivision control law, um, you know, the the parameters for which the board um, reviews a definitive plan um, under subdivision control law, and even the board's own subdivision rules and regulations. This is uh, where if, if somebody comes forward with a definitive plan, and they are not requesting any waivers, um, and the plan meets all of the requirements of the board's um, subdivision rules and regs. Um, it, it becomes uh, a much more challenging conversation, um, and uh to, to den- actually deny a definitive plan. Um, and I, I, since I haven't read engineering's letter yet, um, I'm, I'm hopeful that the, you know, the applicant will grant a continuance, the board only has forty five days in which to file their decision um, from the date the application is submitted. And so it's not even from the date you open the public hearing, it's from the date the application is submitted, and that's a requirement under subdivision control law. Um, the applicant can um, grant the time extension um, to that, which I'm hoping they, they will grant to the August sixth meeting, um, so that, you know, the board and the applicant can review engineering's letter, uh, and have a more informed discussion about uh, that aspect.
What, so, um, Elizabeth, this it's what you're saying, if Stansky McNary McNary came to us and said, we wanna do these two houses. Um, we don't need any waivers, we're gonna do a cul-de-sac, and we're gonna fill in the ravine, and filling in the ravine didn't violate any NRC codes or anything. Then, then the discussion about whether or not the subdivision could take place is based on completely other, other factors.
Um, it 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 becomes a very challenging qualitative uh, discussion that is, is um, of of ver- uh, based on subdivision control law and the courts is a very high bar.
Right now, we're faced with a bar that is based on the request of all these waivers, just a much lower bar.
Well, right now, there, there, there is no bar, cuz this is a preliminary plan, um, it doesn't, it doesn't approve the creation of lots. Um, it, it is um, a, a a discussion tool, not, you know to um, Abby's point, um, I think the, I'm gonna say the To um Abby's point, um I think the, I'm gonna say the last. Um the the last smaller, I'm gonna say smaller subdivisions, you know, two lots, four lots. Um for the past ten years, the planning board has granted a waiver to sidewalks.
Mm-hmm, and sometimes to width as well.
Um oh, oh, yes, I mean, the planning board, you just, you know, recently for the subdivision on Main Street. Granted, you know, certain waivers, and that was for house lots. You know, they granted a waiver to the sidewalk, no sidewalk on one of the roads and but, you know, a sidewalk on the other road. Um so. That may be, as far as the preliminary plan, a waiver that, you know, the board is comfortable in granting. So that when they move forward with the definitive plan design. They already know they they don't have to design the plan, you know, with a sidewalk. Um so that's that's what the the preliminary plan discussion is for is. Um to, you know, allow them to move forward um to create the development of the definitive plan, you know. Understanding whether certain waivers are gonna be granted or not.
I think the plan as it proposed has a lot of hurdles, okay, and that's concerning, and it has so many. Doesn't mean they can't be overcome, but um and I agree that the sidewalk probably isn't a big deal, but. The overall plan has some things that need to be fixed. I think we need to hear from engineering, I think that point about the retaining walls by um Walton Street's a good point, okay? Um obviously, we'd need to hear from the fire department, not just from the contractor that they said okay to the plan. Um you know, I think we need to do the due diligence that we always do on these projects, and I'm not real comfortable. Saying yay or nay to this as it's presented. A lot of fire departments there.
Yeah.
Oh, it is, okay, sorry.
I I had a question, um and I assume that this road um. Would uh involve taking down trees and there would be some mitigation required. Um is that correct?
No, no, so the subdivision, the tree preservation by law, the trees that would be um taken down for the subdivision road. The stormwater and utilities. And for that subdivision road are exempt from the tree preservation by law.
Okay.
The trees um. The trees that would be um need to be removed for the construction of the single family dwellings. Those trees that are greater than six inches um within the setbacks, those would have to be mitigated.
And. And that would come before us, once the properties were?
No. The tree preservation by law does not come before the planning board.
Okay, so it would just go to the tree board or?
Um so the tree preservation by law, there's a um an application um and a plan. You have to survey those trees in the setbacks. And um it goes to the reviewing agent who is the land manager in natural resources. Um and and he is the one that processes those applications, but that application. Um has to be done, it's um through the building department prior to the issuance of the building department.
Well, it was just, I was just wondering on this land where there was room for tree. Mitigation to occur because of the, if we had this huge slope in the back. And not much ability to plant in the front.
So that would not be part of the planning board's conversation?
It's not part of our conversation, but it's something.
So for the for the definitive plan. Um the board uh would probably, you know, suggest that um, you know, they are gonna have to show. Um. They'll have to show the grading that is required just for the subdivision. Um and have showed that. And then, you know, it would be a grading plan that shows um the grading for the dwellings.
But not the mitigation.
The tree preservation by law um is not under the purview of the planning board.
Okay.
When you talk about trees in the setbacks, would the reduced size of the right of way reduce the amount of mitigation that would be required? Just a question, I know.
Um.
Because you'd be, you're moving at twenty feet, and so it doesn't become twenty feet less of the mitigation zone, or does that just become?
So so the the preliminary plan that's shown right now and the the waivers that they're requesting. They're laying out a road right of way, um and that road right of way becomes. Um you know, the the right of way for this new private road. And then the setbacks under the zoning are based off of those new property lines and the edge of that right of way. Um so if you went, you know, looked back at the proof plan. Um all of the trees that would come down for the construction of the roadway and the full cul-de-sac would be exempt. From the tree preservation by law.
This might be premature and it's a small point, but I noticed that the three pro- uh proposed um road names. This is conquered, you can't throw a stick without hitting a rider. But Rooster Freeman is only associated, I mean, or is closely associated with this point of town, so that seems a much more compelling. Road name than Ryder's lane, but um.
So to the road, to the road name, it's um it's, um the historical commission has has not weighed in. On the road, yeah, um but I can, the fire department has, I got an email this morning. Um, excuse me, um I I do know that the the fire department, the assessor and the post office. Um do not like road names with apostrophes on them, um so um that so. The none they, none of them were in favor of that one, and but uh the fire department had no issues with. Um Freeman Lane or Freeman Way, um I did speak to the senior planner Anne Clifford. Um because I I don't think the historical commission meets till um at the ninth of August, so after your August sixth meeting. But that can be a conversation for the definitive plan, but um she felt that there um would be, you know, the general support, the historical commission. Would not have an issue with Freeman Way or Freeman Lane, um there's no other road in town that, you know, has. Any similarity to that.
Which is a nice feature.
So what do we have to do with what's in front of us right now?
Um I I think um the question comes back to um Daniel on. Whether they would be willing to grant a time extension. Um if so, then uh the letter I received from engineering would be sent to the board, sent to the applicant. Um Daniel, myself and engineering can have a conversation about that, if additional information is needed. Um that can be provided and reviewed before the August sixth meeting, um then. My goal would be to, you know, um prepare a preliminary report for the board for the sixth. Um outline the outstanding issues or concerns. Um, you know, some of the comments made here tonight. About additional things that the board would like to see as part of a definitive plan. That would be my suggestion, so I don't, I don't think there's necessarily anything you have to do tonight. Um you know, unless, um if a time extension is not granted. Uh the board only has till Friday to file its decision, and then at that point, I think there's enough. Um outstanding um information and um. Uh that needs to be evaluated uh for the board to make. Of um any type of consideration for the waivers, um and it would be um probably to. Um just deny the preliminary plan, give the lack of, you know, information that the board needs to. Um adequately evaluate those waivers.
Okay, makes sense. I I think um the attorney for the project, Jonathan Silverstein, is here, he's got his hand raised, I think he might wanna say something.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Jonathan, uh can you and, yeah, you're not me today, Mark.
Thank you so much, good evening, can everyone hear?
Yep.
Wonderful, um so I just to Elizabeth's point, I did wanna confirm the applicant does um certainly agree to. Uh continue or extend the time for the vortex on the preliminary plan submission. Um so that you can continue it to the next meeting, that's not a problem at all, we certainly wanna see what engineering has to say. Um if it's okay, uh I'd like to just make a couple other quick points, and maybe this is also information we can. Elaborate on before your next meeting, um you know, to the point of. What the standard is for approving a subdivision uh and approving waivers, um. Uh as Mr. Hughes indicated, the standard for granting a subdivision approval that doesn't require waivers that complies with. The subdivision rules and regulations, which is something uh as the proof plan shows we can do. Um that's allowed by right, state law is pretty clear, cannot be denied. But that's certainly not what we wanna do, that's not what we think would make sense environmentally, certainly from an economic standpoint. Um and we wouldn't think that the town would want it because, or the board would want it, because. Um as was indicated, it's gonna involve a substantially greater amount of clearing. Um and environmental um uh damage. Than the plan that we proposed with the waivers. And the standard for granting waivers is that the board can grant those waivers if it determines doing so would be in the public interest. And I would suggest that clearly it's much more in the public interest. For a two-lot subdivision that your fire department has already said in writing, it has no safety concerns about. It's much more in the public interest to have less of a footprint of clearing and pavement. An impervious area than more, um and there's no safety uh concern with it. Uh there's no, there's gonna be less stormwater that needs to be uh dealt with. And so that's why we think it makes sense and we're hopeful that um once uh the board's had a. Opportunity to look at all the information, look at the engineering department's memo and and. We have a chance to provide a little supplemental information, our hope is that we come out with. Uh as, as you know, not a binding commitment, but. An understanding that the board would rather see the waiver plan than the proof plan. Um we think it makes a lot more sense, um but obviously it's the board that gets to make that decision at the end of the day when we. Come in with a definitive plan, so um thanks for uh taking the time and um I could answer any questions.
I actually do have two questions, but Daniel, earlier you mentioned that the way you have the uh building laid up, the the houses laid out. It's to enable walkout basements, have you looked at what the implications would be in not having walkout basements to everything else?
Well, I guess I would say that. We didn't place the houses to get a walkout basement, it's just where the houses, you know, we wanna. Utilize the flat part of the site and putting a house box there just automatically lends itself to having a lower grade out the back. So it's kind of, you know, I I don't think it would make a lot of sense to place the houses where they are and then fill in behind it to. To prevent a walkout basement, it just kind of naturally lends itself to having a walkout basement because of. The grade drop behind the houses.
Okay.
Okay, I guess, um anyone in the board have any other questions or about next steps, and then um. I guess um this would be a good moment for public comment, I will note that the board did receive one, two, three, four, five. Five letters associated with this that have all been uh posted to our website and were separately distributed. Um so um I would ask that. If you would like to make a public comment, you are welcome to reiterate the content of the letter in some degree, but please don't go overboard. I obviously can't stop you, but we 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 have seen that in the past, so I just would, yeah. So with that, I will open it up to public comment on this issue. Uh just remember to please state your name and address if you have something to say. Go ahead.
You wanna stand up or just? Paul Carroll, uh six hundred Walton Street. Um. I, you know, I think Daniel uh mentioned several times, these these requested waivers are based on the assumption that traffic. The proposed road will be limited only to vehicles from the two proposed houses. I've lived, we've lived in that area uh for twenty-seven years, so we know the traffic patterns very well there at the end of Walton Street, close to Route Two, close to Walden Pond. And there will be many more vehicles than just those going to and from those two proposed houses. The road will be a magnet for vehicles exiting Route Two, seeking a place to turn around to reverse direction. Close road will be a magnet for Walden Pond visitors looking for parking, dropping off and picking up park visitors and their gear. Lining up and idling while waiting for the park to reopen at peak usage times. So the proposed narrower than standard street width will be hazardous for multiple vehicles on that road at one time in in these scenarios. They propose unconventional turnarounds will lead to driver confusion and congestion in those same circumstances. And then the lack of sidewalk, again, with with these cars on this road um. Will be a danger to any children in those two proposed houses, uh and walking the street out to Walden Street to the school bus stop. Or uh uh in the mornings and the afternoons. Um so the new rule is already being proposed in a very congested and hazardous area for vehicular, pedestrian and cyclone traffic. The waivers seem to only exacerbate this congestion and further threaten public safety. Um so just asking the board to kind of carefully consider these concerns, um you know, we we sent one of those letters in on. Kind of outlines all our concerns. Um you know, we don't, we don't see a compelling reason for these waivers uh to be granted, to cut corners on 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 this project. Um. Uh so again, we're asking, please don't allow these waivers to make this area conquered more hazardous than it already is. Okay.
Thank you, um does anybody else have any? Your name and address.
Hi, Mike Sherman, one oh seven, Chris just wrote a question and I guess comment question. Um under what authority or auspices were the determinations made about the lack of historical significance and the lack of? Um uh animal uh presence in this lot? Is that known?
Um so I'm not quite sure I understand.
In the application, it was uh listed as a uh not a significant uh historical site and not a significant. Uh wildlife corridor or presence or something like that.
Um so that wasn't my application, I'm sure Daniel can speak for the applicant, but um for generally. Um the property is not um, you know, listed as part of the, any of the town's. Historic resource documents um and or through natural resources. Um through, you know, the open space plan or um they, you know, um endangered or. You know, um can't think of the name right now, the priority habitat or estimated habitat. Um so it's not um listed in any of those, you know, those documents.
Okay, because it's it's directly um opposing what most of us observe in that space, but it on the.
And and one item that you may wanna uh be aware of, just for reference, and I I do this all the time, the the town's G I S map actually has an overlay. With those areas that have been identified as um significant related to endangered species or.
Priority habitat.
There's a couple of terms, yeah.
Sorry, so I can't think of the terms right now.
Um but that, so that's a good, good resource in general.
And then for historical purposes and um uh I gathered it's some kind of similar. Issue that is designated as non-historically significant?
Um there's, um the town has the historic resources plan. Um that goes through and lists all, you know, um properties in the community and their, you know, historic significance. Um you know, I'm not, you know, not to say that. Yeah. There can be a, you know, uh an argument made that, you know, every square inch of Concord in some fashion to somebody is historic. Um but um yeah, that, you know, there's um identified historic landscapes. Um, but, um, yeah, that, you know, there's um, identified historic landscapes, uh, historic structures. Um, and, and those types of things in, in that, in that plan.
So turns out I then to close, um, among the many open issues that um, are in a letter I shared with the board, I learned since then uh, that in a letter uh, from the town manager um, to the Board of Appeals in two thousand and seven, when the field will be, be considered, that the Historical Society uh, specifically okayed the field in part by noting that Laurel Glen I think, pardon, the Rose Laurel Glen is on the east side of Brister's Hill Road, not the west where the fields were going in. This is the space we're talking about right now. Thanks for consideration.
Thank you. And do we have any online comments? Just kick it over to the internet, see. I'm not seeing any, but I just thought I would give them their chance to. And I guess with that, um, what do we need to do in order to extend the, as an official act?
Uh, so, um, Jonathan has indicated that, um, they have no issue with granting the time extension. Um, I will email, um, the time extension form to, I imagine Daniel, I'm emailing it to you or Jonathan?
Um, you couldn't email it to me.
Okay, um, but uh, for now, based on, um, the uh, the applicant's comments that the board would need to take, um, move to accept the time extension to the forty-five day um, time limit to, uh, August. They put it out to August ninth. Um, the meeting would be the sixth, that gives um, three days to file the decision with the town clerk. Uh, and the board would vote on accepting that time extension and then a separate motion to uh, move to continue the public hearing. Um, I'm gonna say to seven, uh, seven ten on August sixth.
Right, so that's two motions?
Yes.
Okay, then I will move to.
Well, you can, you can make that one motion, but it's two actions, two, two things.
Then I move to uh, accept the time extension and continue the public hearing, accept the time extension to August ninth. And uh, continue the public hearing to seven ten P M on August sixth. Or, you know, uh, just like it says there.
Yeah, for the preliminary subdivision.
For the preliminary subdivision hearing, Heather just texted me, there's a huge storm going through Lunenburg and she's probably gonna lose her power, so. She was just telling me, if you see her drop off, that's worse.
And it did just pass us through, that's funny. Um, so we have that motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Awesome, and then all those in favor? Any opposed? Nope, so that's unanimous?
Thank you.
Great, thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.
And with that, we will move on to um, our seven forty-five item.
Um, get free to exit if you are, no, don't need that. I know it's really, I didn't wanna stay, but.
After that, we'll approve minutes.
On December thirty first.
And uh, the next item business is uh, the recommendation to the zoning board of appeals, the Middlesex um, school for a special permit and site plan review under the zoning bylaw section six point two point eleven, eleven point six and eleven point eight for a new athletic practice facility with a height waiver to seventy-two feet nine inches at fourteen hundred Lowell Road, parcel one five three three. And I will turn it over to you. Great, thank you. So, I'm Lonnie.
I'm getting.
Oh, yep. I'll just, we'll just quickly do introductions and then we'll jump into the presentation once you have that up, so, lining with CBT with the architecture team.
Hi, Kurt La Croix with Middlesex Director of Projects and Safety.
And I'm uh, Steven Van Tressco with Bitch Engineering.
So the presentation is relatively the same as last time, but we did add some items on the end to address some of the comments that came from the last meeting. I can run through the stuff at the beginning or we can jump to the end and maybe work our way back, since I know we're, we would have been over time. I'm whatever makes the most sense.
Happy to let you steer as you want, but I would also be happy to just, you could jump to the end, it's fine.
Yeah, but if you, if you feel you have something to sell, yeah. And then it may trigger more questions, which you can go back to.
Sure, okay.
All right, it, it came through as a PDF.
Yes.
All right, so, I'm, tell me, this is all stuff they saw before?
Yeah.
Tell me when you want me to stop.
Right after the photos. Oh, actually here. So one of the questions was how the filled house compared to some of the other buildings on the campus as far as the mass and the height, so the filled house, the long elevation is here, the short elevation is here. And these are some of the other buildings on campus, just as a comparison, obviously the filled house programmatically, it just requires more space than some of the other buildings, but it's not the tallest building on campus. Um, the chapel, which is here, this fire is roughly ninety or so feet. Elliot Hall, the admissions building also has this fire, obviously it's not as massive as the filled house, but it is a smidgen taller than our building, um, and then of course there are some smaller buildings. The existing gym, which is right next to our building, is larger this, this way, which is existing org gymnasium, which is a connected grouping of buildings, um, so we're fit, we fit kind of, um, it's not that much of an outlier as far as sizes, it's kind of on the campus. On the next slide are some of the views from Lowell Road that we show, just, just the same images as the last time, so I guess we can skip past these unless there are questions. And then this is, and I know some of them are small, but there was a question about shadow studies and how much the building cast shadows onto Lowell Road, so.
I can try to zoom in to to one or the other.
Uh, sure, so, so at each row is a set point in time, so the top would be your fall and spring equinox. The middle, I think, was summer solstice, and then the winter time on the other extreme is the winter solstice, which we're, which we're, we see the longest shadows, but of course the sun isn't up in the sky until later in the day. Um, what we found and it may be easier once you're back at your office, but the, we did outline the building's shadow because it is mixing with the tall trees that are also along Lowell Road. And there's also the new houses that we built, which aren't as tall, but they're also casting the shadow, what we found is that the building isn't casting much more shadow than the trees that are against Lowell Road are already casting, so it's not gonna be and pack floods is new, all of a sudden there's something that are casting shadow, contributing to the existing shadows that are there. There is that. And then.
Do you want me to go over?
Sure, or we can go to the next page unless there are specific questions if we wanna zoom into any portion of this. And I guess one thing to add here is, once you're past, like, really early morning, the shadows high enough, or the sun is high enough to where the building itself really isn't casting any short shadow on Lowell Road. And that's for any of the seasons. So building exterior side lighting, so the building itself, we're not lighting the building as a feature on the west side facing Lowell Road. There are two exit doors, so just to meet code, we do have these small down, down lights at those two entrances on the west side. There's no other building lighting facing Lowell on that side of the building. And then throughout the site, there are pole lights for the parking area. There's pedestrian lighting, light pole, which is kind of agenda, agenda color, which is the school's standard pole, pole light. All those are dark sky compliant. And then there are some existing floodlights, which I know someone, someone at the last meeting raised a concern that it's kind of flashes or it's pointed towards Lowell Road, I think that's being removed even before the project started, so. Yeah, so the flood, the existing floodlights that are on the existing gyms are being removed and replacing the pedestrian lighting with the pole lights that are much more controlled, like down light, the dark track compliant for the, for the pathways between the two buildings.
Yep, is it, does that say post top light at the upper right there, am I reading?
This, this is gonna be on a ten foot pole at each.
Right, is the bolt fully recessed into the solid part or does it extend down below into where the glass is?
It's in the top part, so this is the dark sky, so it's full cutoff, it's not gonna have any light at all. So there is that. One more. Oh, motion control, Steve, was there anything specific to update on this?
Yeah.
Tent parking, I don't think we talked about tent parking last time.
Uh, no, same, uh, I'll just add, so it's, uh, we've expanded it, uh, slightly to accommodate up to ninety-two uh, parking spots. Uh, we have, we've delineated some uh, spots for larger vehicles. Uh, and then provided the rest for standard vehicle sizes, uh. We just talked about ADA requirements and that we, ADA is not proposed in this temporary parking lot, it's just to enable the, the athletic field building construction. And that ADA is accommodated and other, uh, delineated or designated spots on campus.
And since, since we're talking about this, um, did you expand that because of some calculations you're making, and I guess I'm, my question is um, is it necessary, um, could you keep some of that in reserve and, and and or if you had, I don't know, any reason, found people parking on, on Lowell Road. You know, could you expand from where you are now? I, I assume there'll be some prohibitions against any parking on the road.
So that, that, um, similar to many other site plan applications, that's, that's pretty much a standard condition now. It says, you know, there should be no parking on Lowell Road. Usually it's, you know, construction on, on public roads, so any construction vehicles have to be completely on site and. But is this for the temporary parking, the construction, uh, what about the displaced, um, students and teachers and parents? They could still park on Lowell Road.
No, this, this temporary lot is for that, those displaced.
Okay, so then, so, but it's not a standard condition saying the public can't park on the road, just the construction?
Um, correct.
Crews and vehicles, yeah, but you can't stop. This is a public way.
Uh, no, I mean, this.
Oh, cause there's no parking where, on, on the road and there's enough curb to park on, yeah.
Yeah, there's not enough room to park, but no, as part of this project, they have to accommodate
Okay.
their required parking on their site. Um, and that's what this temporary parking lot, um, is, is, is doing.
Were you asking, Linda, could they make it smaller in order to avoid less temporary pavement and just, uh, perturbation? But less perturbation to nature temporarily?
I just wondered, well, yeah, I mean, sometimes you size something and then keep another portion in reserve in case it becomes obvious you need it, but here you've just decided to expand it, I guess because maybe your subcontractors told you they had more people to park or, no, I, or I guess.
No, the simple, simple answer is to that, is when we first looked at the tent parking, we took into effect only the the average student, you know, day student that lives in the area, travels, mainly upperclassmen, seniors. And then staff and faculty that will utilize that. Seventy-three accommodated that no problem. What was not accounted for, which will count was the amount of rented vehicles throughout the sport season, so we have like six vehicles in-house, and then we rent up to sixteen to twenty, twenty plus, given the given the requirements for travel for sports and stuff, so then we were like, oh, wait a second, we, we gotta go back and and really think about this, so that's why we accommodated for bigger spots, we're gonna put some of those rented vehicles there. It's just maybe.
Large passenger vans that your shuttling teams with.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
I think that's the last update. Yes, great, thank you.
I did have one question I, I did ask the last time, I didn't think of it, but in, in terms of the height, you do have the um, solar panel ready, as I recall. Um, if you actually put solar panels on that height, would there be any chance of some glare reflecting onto Lowell Road?
It would be a hard, I think the angle might, potentially, I think all solar panels have the potential for, for glare.
Right.
I don't know how likely it is that solar panels are gonna go anytime, go on anytime soon, just because of you know, dealing with the restrictions.
True, but in several years that will get cleared up and your building will last, I hope, a long time.
Yes.
Um, is there any way to assess that?
I'm saying potentially, uh, it's not something we have assessed now because you know the solar panels aren't going off now, but I would say potentially, it is the angle of the, the roof in relation to the road, I think you'd have to pick like a very specific time of day, a time of year and really dig into it, uh, it's not something you're judging now.
But wasn't it, is that something that gets considered with other buildings in town? Nobody's ever.
No, um, solar panels are basically a, a protected rate, towns cannot. You could ask to shield them, if, if there was a sense that there could be.
They, the installer probably look at the layout and then tell them not to put the panels in certain spots.
Given the type of the roof, I, I'm not, I don't, I don't think architecturally there's an ability to, to shield them. Um, but looking at the, the shadow study, the, I mean, between, I don't expect the board to look at it now, but uh, but between now and, uh, you know, the next meeting. Um, you know, the board can look at that shadow study, but it's, you know, my understanding that it, that even, you know, glare off those, um, any solar panels would be, the only, the only butters are across Lowell Road. I, I wasn't even thinking of, of butters, I was just thinking that a lot of traffic on Lowell Road and if you had, um, some kind of glare, um, because it could be high enough, I, that, I don't know, maybe, I've.
I, 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 um, I think if you were talking about a standard thirty, you know, twenty-four to thirty-five foot house, um, but I don't think you're gonna get glare from, um, a roof sixty some feet up in here. Visually, you, you think your cars down here and the panels are up here. You, you wouldn't get flare down like that.
Which would have to be really, really steep.
There must be some matching.
They'll do, well, but it would do a study, it would do a study before they put the panels in because that's the liability.
It would probably influence people playing on sports fields faster than it would the cars, they'd probably have to think about it more, more, more at the conception or design phase.
So are we just being asked about the height?
Um, no.
The whole site plan.
Your, your um, recommendation, um, does not deal with the requested height waiver. Your recommendation to the Board of Appeals is for the site plan. Um, and that would be, you know, the criteria for educational uses, um. Seven, you know, eleven, six.
Right, six point two point four, eleven point six and eleven point eight. So.
Yes, but there's, you know, there's criteria for, um, for, I'm gonna say regular site plan. And then there's special criteria for educational uses, uh, so the. And then there's special criteria for educational uses. Uh so the board's um recommendation looks at those very specific dealing with, you know, um size, you know, bulk and scale um and um those specific criteria, which um again, I, you know, I hope to have something more tangible for the board for uh the next round. Um again, just got comments from different departments um today. So and then there's some outside consultants or certification and. Yes, so. Yep, so still waiting for um for that evaluation as well. So I'm hopeful to get that shortly. Excuse me, to allow the applicant to review that and and address that.
So if we don't have additional questions from the applicant tonight, we continue this until the next meeting. Is that correct?
That's a question about um hypotheticals. If we receive the stormwater um peer review and then we respond to the peer review and the Pam has provided, boards and commissions have provided all of their comments and we've addressed them. Is, and let's say we do that by the end of this month, hypothetical, I know it's probably not going to happen, but would the board have some kind of draft conditions presumably by August sixth? Is that farfetched? You can say yes, Elizabeth, but I just wanted to ask.
That's challenging.
Well, because we have to review everything at the August sixth meeting and then have notes from that to.
To draft. So I I mean, I I and a- again, this to Mark's point, the conversation the board had about your the schedule, um I I that assisting applicants and and having them move through this process in the most efficient way is, I think, something that um at least since I've been back, the planning division prides itself on with all the boards and committees we handle. Um so understanding the process, the applicant has been continued to the um for the Board of Appeals um to the July, I mean, the August eighth meeting. Um to March point, the sixth, I think the board would have all the information and be able to talk about it. Um at that point, be able to direct me to to draft your recommendation letter. It it it's, it's going to be, you know, similar to, you know, the Concord Academy Centennial Arts. It's you know, it there, there's, you know, not as much going on because of their parking waivers and um and all of that. But, you know, there's going to be a lot of standard conditions. And so if the board, um you know, would like to continue from August sixth to the meeting to review your recommendation, um I would probably advise the applicant to present to the Board of Appeals on the eighth. Um do their initial presentation, get any questions or comments, have the conversation with the Board of Appeals about the height waiver. Um because that's, you know, really, you know, their jurisdiction, the reason for the special permit. Um and then likely the board would continue um to their September meeting to receive the board's recommendation letter. I mean, just given the fact that the recommendation letters that come from this board to the Board of Appeals. Um uh basically, the the names are changed to protect the innocent and the board adopts the planning board's recommendation letter. And that becomes their decision. So that, I think, is is the likely scenario.
Yeah, thank you.
Um but it it also means that following the meeting for the Board of Appeals in September, um you know, that decision usually can be filed the next day with the town clerk.
Because I know you said you wanted to start in September, correct?
You you would be, would be challenging for you to start before the Board of Appeals even renders their decision.
Right.
Um but you can, um and there's going to be, and and Steve and I actually had a chance to talk about this. Um uh there's and did I send you the the decision for the Centennial Arts?
I did not. That's okay. Can I um download it off the website?
Um it's probably really not there anymore, but um there are a a number of standard conditions as the board knows that will have to be satisfied prior to any site work, prior to the issuance of the building permit. And given the level of detail of your um drawings that you have got already gotten to, um you can like basically start now satisfying some of those conditions. So that once the decision gets filed with the town clerk, you you can proceed at your own risk. There's a form, they basically have to file as far as the building permit. Um but the conditions that need to be satisfied prior to site work, um those will have to be um satisfied, you know, even if you're in the appeal period.
Right.
So I I, you know, I I think we're not, we're not talking, you know, months. We may be, you know, talking, you know, a week or two.
That was just a severe thunderstorm alert for our area.
So I guess with that, we will look for a motion to continue.
Uh so this is just a recommendation.
It's just recommended. Okay, so we will, we will continue with that.
Continue this to August sixth. You know, I'm not sure where it's going to be placed yet because um the consultant may be coming with the um I'll have a conversation with the board about the site plan rules and regs. So so I'm not sure where on the agenda it's going to be. We'll cut it out for August sixth.
Thank you. Thank you for coming out. Thank you very much. So moved back to administrative items and I will open up with the floor, I guess, to public comment. Uh what comment is limited up up to fifteen minutes, but only one three minutes allocated to anyone's keeper. Uh public comment is limited to items that are not on the agenda and I'll open it up to the floor in the room.
No comment.
There is no comment by our one spectator. Um if we have any public comments online, I'll open it up there. And seeing none, we will close public comment and then moved on to the combined business residence, mixed use zoning updates. Uh consultant scope of work was provided as part of the meeting package and I listened to listen to pass some.
Um, no, unless the board has excuse me, um any um questions about the scope and the casks.
That all seems fine, but if they call it mixed use, then what will we do about combined business residence industrial, which is also mixed use?
Um I'm I'm sure we can figure it.
Okay, all right. But this looked great.
Great. So Elizabeth, can you move forward with that, I guess? And then um the next item was the potential twenty twenty-five uh zoning bylaw amendment for floodplain conservancy district.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's fairly um simple. I uh I do have the state floodplain coordinator is um there's, there's two things going on. One, um she is looking into the preliminary maps that were finally done and released for the area of Elm Brook, Virginia Road. Um she's verifying that those will be um finalized by the end of the year so that um the town can move forward and uh adopt them. They would need to be included uh in the floodplain conservancy overly district, the the written language, a revised map, um accepted. So that's the one aspect. Um the other aspect of again, I'm not sure any of you were here, um but the, I think it was in twenty twenty. Um the state issued a flood floodplain model bylaw that all communities are required to um adopt. And uh we went through, adopted everything. Um that was fine. Then everything got reviewed. There was one minor section that got left out. Um that got adopted this past year. So the floodplain coordinator is now looking at all of that to make sure everything got included. Um I'm I'm not confident that they're not going to find something. Um so I, but that would be the other thing. So what was in on the board's packet? Um again, I just have um a revised um floodplain map has the actual map on the boundaries. And then there's a flood insurance study that goes with it. That's the FIS and both um dates have to be um incorporated. So that's why you see different um question marks as far as dates. And I mean, yeah, so it's, you know, it's a, it's a it's a fairly simple bylaw amendment where, you know, every year the explanation is the same. Um we have to do this to say compliant with the National Flood Insurance Program and that so people can get flood insurance. So if the, if the map portion does proceed, um then uh what we will do also is, um there will be uh individual notification provided. I hope my windows are shut.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. And the goal of these is to just make sure we get as many of these administrative ones in front of us and taken care of so that it doesn't become a huge backlog right at the end and that doesn't come out.
As as an update, um I am meeting with the building commissioner to go over all of the um additional dwelling unit um items and because the board, your initial conversation, we've had uh a number of really great questions for me to ask the building commissioner. And that's still happening.
Great. Thank you. And then the last item we had was the um meeting minutes of um April sixteenth.
Shall I know that we uh accept them as submitted? Okay, I just moved that.
Awesome. We have a second. Um all those in favor? Any opposed? Nope. Excellent. Fans. And uh with that, that's the end of our agenda for you. So thank you all for coming.